Good to be here. Certainly know why we have such a big crowd at the start of this meeting. We'll be followed by, we have a Boy Scout troop that will be joining us after we finish our Bethel Banshee recognition. You know, a lot of people don't even realize that all four of our high schools are in the city limits of Bardstown. So we pay particular attention to what's going on at both our county schools, our city school, and our Catholic school. So especially when, like tonight with us, we're able to recognize an amazing achievement by the Bethel Banshees to win, some of us older guys were talking about this beforehand, it's our understanding this, first time a girls' team in this county has won an state championship, whereas it's an open championship, it's not a class championship. And the only other one we can remember was, there was a school by the name of St. Joe Prep that occupied this campus here, and a very small Catholic school, and they won a statewide baseball championship before they closed in 1968. So this is an amazing achievement that you all accomplished on October 28th. And what we plan to do is I'm going to present a proclamation to Scott DeOpr, you know, his coach, and then we have signed copies for the rest of your teammates and whoever else, I think we got 21 of them. So for the short, Scott, you just let us know, and we'll get you to sign this proclamation. So if you'll join me up front. And I might mispronounce some of your all's names, so go ahead and laugh when we get to it. This is a proclamation, whereas the Bethel Banshee High School Girls Soccer Team members are, are number four, Senior Kenzie Clayton, oh, excuse me, number six, number four, Senior Kenzie Clayton, number six, Senior Ally Hurst, number three, Senior Ashley Miles, number five, Senior Presley Sparks, number 13, Senior Carly Thurman, number 23, Senior, is it Chloe? Chloe Young, number 17, Junior Bailey Judd, number 14, Junior Mariella Lozano, and number 11, Junior Tessa Miles, number seven, Junior Pavy Morton, number 22, Junior Molly Parkinson, number 18, Junior Gracie Zederman, number 21, sophomore Anna, is it Coops? Hannah Coops, number 19, sophomore Savannah McGumberry, number 12, sophomore Gracie Osborne, number 10, sophomore Bailey Robey, number one, freshman Neely Chee, number nine, freshman Taylor James, number two, freshman, is it Rihanna? Rhanna Morgan, number 24, freshman Irish Padgett, number eight, freshman Aubrey Reynolds, and number 20, freshman Zoe Thurman. Is it Zoe or, okay, I didn't mess it up too bad. All right, and whereas the Banshees were guided by head coach Scott DeOpr and assistant coach Katie Daly, and whereas the Bethel Banshees defeated Bardstown 2 to 1, winning the district title, and went on to win the fifth region title by defeating Elizabeth Town with a score of 2 to 1. And whereas the Banshees continued their winning streak, tripping on the Bullitt East in the Sweet 16 with a score of 6 to 0, in the Elite Eight with a score of 4 to 1 against Henderson County, and in the Final Four against Bull County with a score of 3 to 0. And whereas the Banshees won the 2023 State Championship for the first time in Bethel School history, making them only the second Class A school to win the Girls Soccer State Championship, defeating seven-time state champion Sacred Heart with a final score of 4 to 3. And whereas Bethel won that, and the citizens of Bardstown wished to express their heartfelt congratulations for the Bethel Banshee Girls Soccer Team on their first ever state championship. Now therefore, I'm Jay Richard Heaton, Mayor of the City of Bardstown, to hereby encourage all Bardstown residents to join us in celebration of the Bethel Banshee's 2023 Girls Soccer Team. Congratulations. Coach, would you like to add here a few words if you'd like?
Yep, sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council members, and this is just another outstanding award, and you know, I couldn't be happier and more proud to represent such a great group of girls. You know, first and foremost, they get it done in the classroom also. I think our team GPA is 3.86, so. And it's just a great group, obviously a lot of talent. You know, we had to get, you know, you have to have some luck along the way to win a state championship at any level, but they also make their own luck. And it's, it was just an outstanding run, a great group, a team effort, and you know, again, just a lot of people to thank, the community rallying behind us, and I was telling somebody the other day, you know, to win a state championship is special, but to do it in a city that we now call home, are my family, in Bardstown, just makes it even that much more special. You know, much less to do it with a school of 150 girls versus going over, you know, playing Sacred Heart in the state championship game. I think they have 700, 800 girls, just an outstanding achievement. I was talking to one of the, somebody at the KCSA the other day, and you know, this is something that certainly, I don't know that we'll realize the gravity of this until they're even 20, 30 years down the road, but not only did they win a state championship, they participated maybe in one of the most classic games to ever play in the KCSA history. You know, the score was 4 to 3, and there's four goals scored in the last, the last nine minutes of the game to win it, so historic on multiple fronts. So can't thank you guys enough, and thank you, girls, and again, proud to represent this wonderful group. Thank you.
Once again, congratulations to the City of Bardstown, all of you. We're proud, happy, happy, wish you all the best, maybe years ahead, because I can see quite a few players coming up, a lot of freshmen, sophomores, and juniors, another opportunity down the road, thank you. So, thank you. Now, the rest of me is not going to be as much fun as this, so stick around and you love with us. If you'd like to, you know, we'll head on home and get some dinner.
Thank you so much.
Sure, then, the star player was in the cage, the one that invited, the one that beat the cage, was the star player. Heck, those boys in y'all high school in South America, that's what. We have a Girl Scout troop, 721, who are joining us as part of their merit badge, who find us, and hope that doesn't grant you coming in here at this moment. I think we're out there.
They're outside.
Welcome, guys, come on in. Okay, the second group of students and people involved in extracurricular activities in our school, the Boy Scout troop 721, and I think the scout master is Matt Brown, and Matt, if you'd like to let us know, the process of your all's busy, if you'd like to hear about it.
Yes, you know, our scout oath starts out, "I will do my best to do my duty to God and our country," and this is one of the founding tenets of our country, is our small-town government. And all the boys here, either in the course of one of their Eagle-required merit badges, or just to rank up to the next merit badge, has to come and observe, I mean, none of them are old enough to be involved in the governmental process yet, but to come in and observe and see what it's like, see what a city council meeting is like, and interact with you all. So thank you again for opening up the doors to us.
Thanks to Matt, and thanks all you men to be here with us today. Okay, with that being said, Sam Lacy and Frank Hibs, Councilman Hibs, have here with us this meeting to give us an update on the Bourbon Capital Alliance license plate. Both these men have been involved in this thing from the very start, so it's exciting, I think, what we're about to hear from you all, so. Frank, you were saying, Peter Lang.
All right, I appreciate, this has been a long project, it's been a special project, and a labor of love, I think, for Sam and I and everybody involved in Bourbon Capital Alliance. Started off as kind of a small idea that really tripled out to us getting a chance to meet with the state, and kind of proud to say that this is the first license plate in the state of Kentucky that actually has our name on it, or a town name on it, if I'm not mistaken. So another feather in the cap for Bardstown, saying it's our own Bourbon, comes from Bardstown plate, and we wanted to do a philanthropic component, like something to give back to the community. So Sam's going to talk to you a little bit about a scholarship program that we've got going on with a couple of different other distilleries here in town to give back to the community.
Yep, and thank you all for having me tonight. So if you don't know me, my name is Sam Lacy, I'm the executive director of the Bourbon Capital Alliance. And Frankie Hibs is chair of my board, and he, at our very first board meeting, Frankie attended, he said, "I've got an idea." He said, "All right, let's hear it. Let's do a special license plate for Bardstown." And, okay, let's go down that road, let's figure out what the proceeds need to be used for. And we worked with Hannah Bowman at the city, who handed in an incredible job designing this plate for Bardstown, pays homage to our bourbon heritage as the bourbon capital of the world. That is ultimately what Bourbon Capital Alliance is here to do. We serve to plant that flag as the bourbon capital of the world, deeper and deeper into the ground each year. And so this license plate will serve as a mobile marketing piece, it will be available throughout the state of Kentucky, starting January 2024. With those plate proceeds, state law stipulates that each year it is money in, money out, 100%, and that it be used for some type of charitable, philanthropic, scholarship component. So what we came up with is, one of our partner distilleries is James B. Beam, and James B. Beam has an institute at UK called the Beam Institute of Distilling. And we spoke to them, Freddie No, eighth-generation master distiller, James B. Beam, and said, "Let's establish a scholarship program for Nelson Countyans ideally, where we can help pay for this two-year certificate program, with the hopes that they come back and take high-level jobs here in Nelson County in our distilling industry." So we will establish that, we will start to realize proceeds from the license plate in January 2025. So we've got a little time, but that was the idea that we proposed to the state, and they accepted that idea. We also plan to allocate some of those proceeds to bolster the Kentucky Distillers Association DEI scholarship. They have an existing scholarship, diversity, equity, inclusion, and we will use that to bolster that as well, we feel that's important. So we're tying in with UK, with James B. Beam, and the KDA, who's a great partner here in Bardstown.
Absolutely. And I'll be honest with you, I didn't know if that first game was going to be my last game and bringing up this kind of idea, but it is a lot of fun, fantastic job, everybody at the VCA has been behind it from day one. It's been about three years before we finally seem to get to this date where we're actually going to be able to see them in production, so hopefully in January we'll see a lot of these on the road, and this scholarship up and running.
Yeah, it's a mobile marketing piece for Bardstown, it's exciting. It will be available throughout the state.
Great, and you say a great logo, the new tag, and a lot of people probably happy that I just want to have one of those tags in the back of their cars here.
There's a lot of excitement around it. When we got the news that it will finally be produced in January 2024, we shared it far and wide with our distilleries, our board, and city council, and there's a lot of excitement around it. So, yeah, we're hoping that people will purchase the plate beginning in 2024, and that those scholarship, those proceeds will go to this scholarship and kind of build that next contingent of talented Nelson Countyans. We want to keep that talent here in Bardstown.
Thank you all. The council members have any questions for Sam or Frank?
Well, all the plates have the same lettering and annotation, or how are you going to do that?
You can do whatever you want to do. The only thing that will stay the same is just Bardstown Bourbon Capital World in Kentucky on the top, but we've actually been trying to work out a couple of different things too, about maybe auction off someone to say on the rocks or deeds or something like that for charity as well.
Six-character limit, councilman, and so if you want to pay a little extra fee, I think it's 10 or 15 bucks, you can customize the verbiage on the plate. Yes, sir.
You put G D D 24 on there?
Sure. I already have that.
All right, thank you all. On the next line on the agenda, we have a sewer request for the Guthrie Opportunity Center. This has come about, their intention is to subdivide their parent tract, which is, there's about a four-and-a-half acre tract that's unused, undeveloped right now, and when you do that, you have to have a big plat recorded, and that plat must show that there's water and sewer service available to the property, and that is required then to hire Robert Mills, their engineer, to design the sewer connection service, as well as Jeff Wolf to do the survey. And so I know that they looked into the possibility of developing that tract themselves, it was, warehousing is in such demand right here, that that's an obvious use for that industrial park, and the price tag was somewhere between $7 and $9 million, which is far beyond their capabilities, I think their goal is to list the property and put that, those proceeds into an endowment, help them down some of their other business activities. So seeing the letter, sewer service is way down the front towards 245, and Robert has designed it, and Jessica signed off on that, and it can be met with the water right there at the entire tract, has a water line that takes it to it, so these are just the requirements for them to create a plat from a parent plat. So we need your all's approval to accept this, was going to be built by whoever builds it, and I've done the point of our specifications.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we accept the request.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
And second, for Councilman Hibs? Any further discretion or questions? Seeing none, and all in favor, is there about to say an aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's carried. I would have backed up a bit if we didn't have this on at least my one agenda, but I would call on Aaron Bowles, we have a new employee at the City of Bardstown, I want to call on Aaron, we'll introduce Damon to the floor.
All right, so after about four months, since I've taken the new position, the City Administration position, it's taken me about four months, but I finally found my replacement. So this job, so before I was CFO, I've changed that title and kind of changed the duties up slightly, so Damon's title's going to be Finance Manager. So he'll take over basically running the finance department, CSRs, billing, all the tax revenue that we receive, and some meter work, and accounts payable, general accounting for the city. So I'm happy to have him on. Again, this is Damon Sistrung, I'll give him just a minute to say a few words.
Yeah, Damon, if you'd like to give us a little, I know, I reviewed the resume and so forth, you spent a lot of time with J-Town, government, and also Little Metro, and I think perhaps even sometime in Lexington, I think, it sounds like government accounting is in your DNA, so if you'd like to address the council, you could hear from there.
Well, Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for having me, and I'm honored and happy to be a part of your team. As Mayor said, I've had about 23 years of government experience in accounting and tax, so I've spent over two decades with the city of Little Metro and their tax art department as an auditor, and also as an audit manager. Been several years here recently with the City of J-Town as their Director of Revenue, and I'm just excited and happy for the opportunity and look forward to serving.
Congratulations. This is, this is, as far as weekends, next, first two days, and came back so happy. We had a desk ready for him, we're not ready for something else, but it was, we had it for him, so welcome, thank you.
Mayor, if I could, for those of you that don't know, he has a very famous relative, would you like to share that?
For football fans, especially historic football fans, I had a relative by the name of Otis Sistrung, who played for Boston for years back in the 60s, so yes, he is a relative of mine.
Some of us are old enough to remember, he played, that's pretty strong. Good to hear that. Okay, the next line on the agenda is usually reserved for COH, the Historic Review Board, but I'm going to go ahead and bring up, we have an open seat for our Historic Review Board right now, Suzanne Hayton is retired off the board, she's gone back to work more than, she was previously working, it takes her out of the country quite a bit, and she's not able to get a lot of the meetings, so she has intended her resignation for those reasons. And the person that, after we've done some interviews and reached out to some people who would be willing to serve, we found a local person who has moved back here by the name of Nancy Foster. Nancy lives in the historic district on John Fitch, and she's an interior designer, which is more than just an interior decorator, designer gets into the construction side of things and so forth, so she's got an extensive resume in working with redoing homes and businesses and that sort of stuff, and works both here in the United States and abroad. And so I think I've got her, filled my memory right there of her resume, I saw her and talked to her last Thursday, and she was happy, I said, "Are you sure you want to do this?" She's, "I'm happy, I'm looking forward to doing something since she's back here in Bardstown now." Joe, I think he has contacted Nancy prior to this.
Yeah, I guess I've known her for quite a while, she didn't realize I knew her, she was formerly married to Rick Maddy, who was a contractor in Bardstown, built a lot of, built a really nice home, I think she was involved in that, and I forget how she ended up in New York, but she, I know she has a customer base now, it's her customer lives in Dubai, that is her customer base, one person, that she actually made a living off of, and she's on her resume, I'm not telling things about her, but she's very excited about this, and she fills one of the niche requirements that I think our ordinance requires us to have, at least two people, I think it is, in the professional end, like a designer, architect, or somebody's been a builder or something like that on there, so.
Something with some technical expertise.
Yes, so I think she'll be good, I hope she is, it's a tough job, most of you know.
Okay, so if you have some, you may not call on Luckett, she, that's her sister. Foster's a maiden name, they grew up out in the Woodlawn area, growing up and so forth. So with that being said, I would here to take a motion to approve the appointment of Nancy Foster to fill the unexpired term of office for Suzanne Hayton effective immediately.
So, ma'am.
And the motion, Councilman Williams, is it a second?
I'll second there.
Is it a mutated, all right, a second, but a Councilman Bowles, any further discretion or questions? All right, all in favor, six about to say an aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's carried. It's good to get that position filled. All right, now I'm going to get back up on the agenda, and the next thing we've got is our minutes from our October 24 meeting, everybody had a chance to review those, if there's no changes or additions, we can prove that I'm unanimous consent. All right. Reports of staff at the committees, don't have it asked Chief Todd Spaulding to make this report out under the baby box dedication we had last Thursday, but I think he spent most of his afternoon down at the Boston flight, an eight-hour fire that was out, I think we had four that day, Chief?
We did, yes, sir. He has some busy day to fill fires and stuff, so I was a little late getting to the baby box dedication, but we did get that dedicated, and it's open, it's ready to go, hopefully we'll never have to use it, but it's there if need be. October was a busy month for us, we, it was fire prevention month, so we did, we did like 300 hands-on, over 300 people, we taught fire extinguisher training to, to multiple businesses around town, we did over 20 hours of construction, pub ed events to the kids and schools, we had 169 fire calls, and we did like 1,000 hours of training, and three days of that was in confined space training, so you know, a lot of our public works go down in manholes and sewers and things like that, so if they come trapped, we can go down there and get them. So we had a good, busy month, but glad to have the baby box going.
Yeah, Chief, a lot of fire, jumped out of his truck, the baby box is a wonderful asset, just the background on that was Gary and Kathy Sal decided to purchase a baby box and donated in memory of their son Josh, who they lost in a tragic car accident on the Bluegrass Parkway July 4th of 2022. And she brought that idea to Councilman Little Hart, and then Betty, and Joe Pruitt with EMS, took the ball and ran with it, and contacted the company that does these boxes, did all the paperwork, and found out about all the training that's required, all the equipment required of it, and so it was really, at that point, became a kind of a joint venture between the city and the county. This, of course, Maintenance Department did the installation, Interstate Security, we contacted them, they donated the alarm system, they're given a discounted rate for the use of alarm being used on the baby box. The Fire Department was more than willing to host it at Fire Station 1, and just hosting is not all that happens, there's a lot of training goes on in coordination with not only the Bardstown Fire Department, which you have to coordinate with Dispatch, and EMS, and Sheriff's Department, because our Fire Department could be on a call when the baby gets placed in that box, and that's where the alarm would go off and then they have to be back up in coordination to make sure that the baby is safe and okay, and then we have to transport the baby to the Flasory Hospital and get in touch with state things. So a lot of cooperation, and all these agencies, EMS, Dispatch, Bardstown Fire, and Sheriff's Department, Bardstown Police, have all been meeting to make sure our coordinated effort is set, and you know what, I have to wait unless the baby box is. We know what will happen later if the baby box is used. This is the 23rd box in the state of Kentucky. There's 180 of these boxes around the country. And this Monica Kelsey started this. She lives in a small town in Indiana. She introduced herself, and I don't know about the rest of it. It was a very amazing story that she told about how the baby box idea got started. She said there was a lady, unmarried mother, who was pregnant back in 1973, had a lot of issues going on and had nowhere to go. She decided, literally left a baby on the side of the road. And that baby was this Kelsey. Said 1973, 50 years ago, she was left on the side of the road and found and adopted and has done amazing things. And so I think she got this idea based on her own experience to have a baby box, creating some people who have choices. Parenting is not just cut and dry for everybody. And so this gives parents other opportunities, other child opportunities that might be different about it. So we hope it helps somebody here in Barstown since we've got that. So she was a wonderful lady. And her husband's the mayor of the town, and they're probably 2,000 people. So doing a lot of good work here in the United States. Okay, that was really a great day, Chief. Thank you all for hosting that event.
Yes, sir.
It was very well. Move on down to, we have two municipal orders. One municipal order M-2023, dash zero three, Tax Moratorium, 104 North Fourth Street. If y'all remember, we tabled this one because it was some background we needed to get on, the reason this was coming up at the time that it came up to us, all that ordinary head, I assume it turned. There was some background on this particular one.
Thank you, Mayor. So I was able to speak with a couple people, make a clarification on this. So these applications for the tax moratorium are required to be, the application is required to be made before the work is done. So my concern, this is the Mr. Tubbs property. So when I saw this on the agenda without knowing the backstory, I thought, oh, my goodness, it looks beautiful, but it's done. We learned after speaking with Planning Commission and with PVA Office that the application was made in late October, early November, before of last year, of 2022, before they started the work. Of course, there was an election in 2022, and the incumbent PVA left office, and the new PVA came in. And there was just some disconnected communication. And it was received in the PVA office timely, but was not transmitted to us after that. And so when the PVA's office called to check if it had been approved, the city clerk let her know that we didn't have any idea what that was. So then they sent it to us. So we can still approve it since, of course, it's through no fault of the applicant because the application was made timely to the PVA and was made before the work was completed, which is the main requirement. So it was, you know, through no fault of theirs that it didn't come to us.
It's been a five-year...
It's five years. They seem to defer that value. Usually it gets to be taxes, the lower value.
Closing, they're going to invest $200,000 in the property they purchased. So they'll get a five-year moratorium on the increased value before they'll be assessed the new dilatory improvements have been made. So anyone have any other questions about this one, 104 North Fourth Street, Mr. Tubbs' property? Not that I would ask for a motion to approve the moratorium request for 104 North Fourth Street, municipal order M-2023, dash zero three.
So moved there.
A motion by Councilman Hibs, is it a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Chekels. Any other discussion or questions? If not, then all in favor, so you're about to say aye? Any opposed? The motion's carried. The next one is another municipal order M-2023, dash four. This is a moratorium on 109 West Eero Street in the historic district as well. Quite as a bigger project. It's $50,000 in new investment on a property currently valued at $67,000. So they're requesting a moratorium on their additional new investment there.
And that one is all before the work is done?
Yeah. Doesn't really go until it comes to us prior to starting the work.
This was created as an incentive, which we don't, we have hardly any incentives to redo and clean up properties. That was the whole purpose, is to encourage people to involve, take your own properties and try to save them. This one might come in.
Good, I'd ask for a motion to approve this order M-2023, dash four, at 109 West Eero Avenue.
So moved there.
Motion for Councilman Bowles, and second, our Councilman Buckman. Any other discussion or questions? Seeing none, then all in favor, so you're about to say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next slide that we have is Cemetery Deeds. We have one grave, N'Deo Vargas, is that right? N'Deo Vargas and Zebra Zander, Lark Zoner. Each one grave site. We can approve that by unanimous consent, unless there's any questions. All right. Any of the council members have anything to bring before the council this evening?
I'd like to make one more comment. We're on cemetery there for a second. Very simple formula. We are now able to sell spots in the Colli Berry. It's been repaired. Still got a couple more little mixed things, but it is, it looks really nice. It is available for anybody. I just want to make that known. People still might not know it's there.
Of course, if you all remember, this is a short time after we took that in, it was vandalized extensively. It was like some time for all the basic parts here for that type of structures. Special reserve. It's not like those stuff is sitting on shelves somewhere. I'm glad to have that back open. If there is some contact, just like you would for any kind of grave site that you might have with our cemetery section. Thank you, Joe, for bringing that up. Move on. Any other council members have anything else to bring before the council?
I think I shared this with some of you all last week. We finally have our first free Narcan dispensing machine. It's at the, First Christian Church was on the corner of 245 and North Third Street, across from Walgreens. We put in 12 packages, which has two doses in each package. There's a QR code on it that you can scan, and it takes you to a resource directory to get help, treatment, and things like that. There's also a QR code that is optional, that you can help us collect data as to who's removing those and for what reason and things like that. So in the first week, we got it up and going last Monday. The Control District Health Department has taken on the job of replacing any removed units. And they restocked it yesterday, and three had been taken just during the first week. So we felt good about that. So again, it's there for people who may need it, whether it be for themselves or a family member or somebody just wants to keep some on hand.
They also have artists and machines?
It's a repurposed newspaper machine. It's much smaller than the one that Vine Grove has, you know, but it's, they didn't have to reinvent the wheel. It just, so it's not as intrusive and large.
The Lady Control Health Department is handling the bank cons on it and so forth.
The stocking and getting the Narcan and...
I know we had that baby, opioid passports and all, that baby here a few months back. It was, that was like almost the number one thing that family members who had lost, family members or had some overdose, and they got lost. They were literally begging for something like this in the community to help prevent overdoses. So I hope it helps.
Hope so, too.
We're trying to do something. Doing nothing's not marketing somebody. Need to make things.
It's like the baby box. If it saves one person, it's all worth it.
All right, thank you, Betty. Any other council members have anything to bring up tonight? As far as my report out, we also had the mayor's part groundbreaking last Thursday. They started demo work yesterday, and formal work will start week from Monday with a parent construction company. They've got a lot of experience here in Central Kentucky doing government work, they're doing the clock tire over in the city of the Red right now. Got a lot of work in Lebanon with sidewalks occurring and that area. So they came highly recommended to us. We're about 80%, we've raised about 80% of the money for this Phase One privately and also with a $150,000 grant we got from the state through the Land Water Conservation Fund that the park, the local government, the administration, that was a great help to get us to this point. And we're working, we're finishing up on a marketing piece that Hannah Bowles, our Communications Director, and Aaron and I have worked with her. It's fixing to go out. That's what we're hoping to raise the balance of Phase One. The notes, maybe we'll raise all of it that we need for both the Phase Two, which would be the bathrooms. So looking forward to getting that out here pretty soon. And I, matter of fact, had one call from a local person who would probably be a fairly substantial donor since they heard about the groundbreaking and the seats and activity and asked me to give her a copy of the package to be sent out. So hopefully we'll hear from her here soon. We had a meeting yesterday out of Berneheim of the Project Transportation Cabinet, myself and Dylan Burmington, engineering, along with Brad Spalding, Judge Hutchins, Pro System from North Nelson Water District, about the widening of 245 from Flagey Hospital to Happy Hollow Road, which is the old entrance to Jim Dean. Some of the other members, they used to go into this one road. They got a new road. So that road will be, right now, you know, it's a four-lane with a center turn lane. It'll continue that way for some time until it kind of gets into more of the Berneheim corridor, where there's not probably any development on either side of the road. And there's a lot of shale in that area, which also impacts the cuts that have to be made. At that point, it'll be a four-lane road until it gets to Happy Hollow. So we had a two-hour meeting over that. They are pretty much finalizing the design and plan to have a public meeting to present it at Thomas Nelson High School early December. So that would be a people's chance to discuss about it and so forth. But it's still, just based on the discretion, I think it's still could be a couple of years late before it starts and get it completed. It's nine miles of road improvement. So long overdue. There's 15,000 hours a day on that road. Based on their modeling, it's definitely prime for widening and adding some lanes. So it'd be a great improvement and much safer. They shared with us a lot of traffic accidents and injuries. And that highway has a lot of accidents. And most of them are where there's roads, you know, where people are entering or exiting the roads. Rear end, when people stop to turn left and so forth. We've had unfortunately at least one death a year on that road in the last three years through the road. So, but I think the numbers I saw was like over 100 accidents in a five-year period. That's a lot. In particular, accidents or engineered accidents and if not a death accident. So it's good to hear that number. Senator Hayton is Chair of the Transportation Committee in the Senate. It's been one of his priorities to get this thing moving along. So it looks like it is. So I hope to hear more on that in the near future. I think, I'm not exactly certain of the date. Early December is when they're planning on it. Thomas Nelson, they have a lot of large boards and showroom where all the easements are from. Oh, and one of the, part of this meeting was, as you all know, we've got this little water company, water project coming from I-65 all the way to the city limits. And this impacts that with, hey, he's obviously the current easement right away, start construction immediately because of this new construction. Local Water Company, good news is, Local Water Company has already designed their phase of it to get it to Nelson County where it ties into North Nelson. Their design's already been approved and part of it. So they will be starting their part of it here in the near future. And of course, North Nelson has been needing to walk around with design for them to figure out where they will put their line, which the line itself is going to be a 24-inch line. About as big as we can afford. Be able to bring another 4 million gallons a day of water to Barstown and Nelson County, which is a little more than, well, the city's, we average about 4.2 million a day. I'm not sure what North Nelson is, but this will be bringing in four more million a day once it's completed. But working around the new right away, the new easement is, yeah, is a challenge with some of it you have to get private easements from. And then the state's working with it everywhere they can to let that water line go into the state right away, which helps a lot. So anyway, they know how important that is to us for our future water supply from, I don't know, Nelson County. But we also supply water to Blue Hill and New Haven, a little small area of the Rude County and the Frederick's Park area of Washington County. So it's important water projects. So we're glad to hear that Local Water Company got their part approved. And doesn't seem to be any problem. Water line with Burnout, but doesn't seem to be a problem. But gas lines, a different subject matter. So they're okay with water line work with that. Anybody have any questions on any of that part? Okay. Well, that's all I have. Unless anybody else has anything to bring before the council this evening? If not, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Motion back to your back, would you?
I'll second.
Second back, Councilman Hart. All in favor, say aye? Any opposed? Motion's carried.